Good morning, everybody, and welcome to City Council's Study Session for this week. We have three items. First, a regular update from Sarah Ness on COVID response. Then we're going to discuss some proposed housing development incentives offered by Council Member Kinnear in collaboration with other council members. And then we're going to discuss a potential resolution regarding the downtown plan to get council feedback on what's come through the process so far and that the Planning Commission has offered for our consideration and adjustment. So with that, Sarah, thanks so much for joining us. Tell us what's going on.
Yes. Good morning, Council President and everybody else. Can you hear me? Great. So I'll be sharing some of the SRHD's health data that they sent out for the period of May 22 through May 28. With a caveat that these data include at least 363 backlog cases that they are working to clean through now. Last week, we had a total of 1,145 new cases. It's a daily average of 164. The rate per 100,000 people of new cases is 385 over the last two weeks. Cases by age, we are seeing some increase in some of our middle-aged population. 20% of the cases are being taken by the 20 to 29-year-olds, 18% of the 30 to 39-year-olds, and an increase to 16% among those 40 to 49. On the other end of that, 14% carry the 10 to 19-year-olds and 14% also carry the 50 to 59-year-olds. Cases by race, American Indian, Alaska Native is 1%, Asian 1%, Black 2%, Hispanic 4%, Native Hawaiian or Other Pacific Islander is 1%, Other or Unknown, as in non-reported, is 24%, and White is 68%. As far as hospitalizations, we had 32 new Spokane County residents hospitalized this week compared to 38 last week, and a total as of May 28 of 73 individuals in the hospital. We had 10 new deaths this week compared to two the previous week, including a child aged 0 to 9. I don't have any information about that except for what I've read alongside the rest of you that SRHD and the state are investigating the cause of that and any comorbidities or associations. As far as testing goes, our percent positive testing rate in our region is 13.2. Vaccinations, as of May 26, they have given approximately 371,789 vaccines, resulting in of people aged 16 and above who have fully received both doses or received one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's 42.63%. Again, that's as of May 26, so I would assume that has increased since then. As far as our isolation facilities go, we have closed down the Immaculate Retreat consensus location because we have tons of room at My Place Hotel, which will still be used for isolation purposes. There have been five new outbreaks in long-term care facilities, and what that means is, you know, each outbreak is one facility. Don't know how many individuals were infected based on this report. And that is the end of their data brief. Any questions?
Hi. Do you want to give an update on what's happening with our staff and all the pop-up clinics?
Yes. So what I know is that we have been offering, I'm assuming you're referring to the fire stations? Yes, so some of our fire stations, that meaning City of Spokane Fire Stations, I'm not sure if any of the county fire agencies are doing the same thing, but there will be vaccinations offered at some of our fire stations for community members who live in that area who would like to walk up, administered by our EMTs and paramedics who are allowed to administer vaccines. I'm actually not sure which fire stations are doing that, to be honest, off the top of my head. So do you know, Council Member Moon?
Yes, Fire Station 8, Fire Station 17, and I believe, what is the one on the South Hill? I just saw that one.
Fire Station 9.
Nine. And they'll be rotating, there'll be 16 different sites, and then there is one for staff and I believe possibly families. So City of Spokane employees will be invited out. I think they're going to do it at the Ops Complex, the Nelson Complex is what I heard. I don't know if I have that exact date, but I asked Brian Cottings to make sure to loop and let all staff know that it's there and they can go and they can make a reservation through SRHD or they can just show up. And yesterday, we had 18 people in the first hour and a third of them were just walk-ups. And it was in an industrial area. There was like a UPS driver who said, hey, can I get mine? Who came by. And so I just hope all council members take this opportunity, work with Lisa Gardner, go to one of these. There's one tonight at, from 4 to 6, at Indian Trail. And so I'm going to pop by and I just, you know, maybe schedule that, too. You can do Facebook Lives from there and really push it with the neighborhood councils, too.
Great. And yeah, just as a reminder, folks are also welcome to go to their, any pharmacy pretty much is able to offer them, as well as the arena clinic is still offering vaccines. Any other questions?
I was just going to note on that crazy situation of the backlogged data coming in, some of, probably a lot of you saw it in the paper, but there is a little bit of a workaround. So the way that our local numbers come out from the Health District, they put them in when they receive them regardless of when the testing was. But on the state database, if you want to go and check out Spokane, they have it listed on the date of the test, but they don't really have up-to-date numbers for the last few days. So it's really hard to piece it together, but that makes it really hard to know how we're really doing, and our local folks aren't really breaking it down necessarily easily how many are backdated cases coming in. So it's hard to know exactly. But it looks like, instead of our cases going up, what it looked like, we're just holding steady at the moment and hopefully we'll be going down.
Yes. Dr. Velasquez, yes, Dr. Velasquez said on the Tuesday call, I apologize, I should have mentioned this, there was a few things that he mentioned that I wrote down here, that based on the cases that they have been cleaning to try and mitigate and reconcile those few backlog data, they, his assessment slash projection is that we are actually plateauing right now with cases, not necessarily increasing. So that could do, and he believes that the data, as they get it cleaned over the next week or so, will show that. Obviously, we can't know the future, but for now, that's what we're looking at. Some of the other things he shared, and I get apologies after that I wrote these down, is that he is working with some of the summer camp leaders as we move into summer, you know, kids are out of school, and then now we're opening up vaccinations for youths over time, working with the summer camp leads to find ways to be able to mitigate any infections among our young people that are out this summer, and working with rural communities as well. He wanted to reiterate that we are not at a sprint. This is a long-term game to try and get our community vaccinated. Obviously, sooner is better because that allows us to do the things that we miss doing pre-COVID, but in the long run, the goal is just to encourage folks to get vaccinated as they can. And then they are going to do an after-the-academic year exercise at SRHD and some of the school districts. So the goal, I believe, is to find out how things went, how good a partner SRHD was, what they could do, you know, in the future to be a better partner through pandemics and other health-related incidents. And then the last thing he reported is that their events and venue work group, which they created a couple months back, is sort of a way to create a website with all the places where you can go get vaccines and things like that. They will be...
I'm sorry, I cannot read my own writing.
Well, I think he just said they're meeting with all the key people from the event people so that we can do events. So that's what, he just wanted everyone to know.
Accurate. You were on that call, too. Thank you.
Yeah, that they were doing good customer service. Anyone who wants to hold an event, they're working closely with them. So.
Accurate. End of report on my end.
Yeah. No. Sarah, thank you always for coming. Great to hear from you and just for our viewers and just council as a whole to just get the latest. So thank you for that. And next, I have Council Member Kinnear, who's going to talk about some housing development incentive proposals. And I challenged Council Member Kinnear about a month ago. I said, if you really want development in centers and corridors, we got to have incentives. And she said, I'll take care of that. So what do you have for us?
Yeah. Thank you. Can you all hear me? Okay. So Jacoby just installed a new camera on my monitor, so we're, you know, we're high-tech here. Anyway, Natalie, can you pull up the stuff in the packet so everybody can look at it at the same time? What I did was I rose to the challenge and pulled out most of the stuff that we've done before, that we let lapse, or that we decided we couldn't fund anymore, and dusted it off and specifically targeted centers and corridors. And I wanted to not only incent development around centers and corridors, but single-family that's under 250K, because we know that that is really that missing middle piece, people who want to buy housing, good luck finding that. So as we're waiting for this to come up.
Oh, yeah, it's not coming up.
All of these, as I said, we've used before. So the City Utility Connection was subsidizing utility hookups for vacant and underused buildings that are renovated to mixed use. We're having trouble, so I'll just read them. And to use our P funds, this would keep that money in the Development Services because Development Services is an enterprise fund. So we would keep it there. Then if we move on to, thanks, Natalie. I'm just going to go over these quickly and then we can go back one by one, and you guys can ask questions or you can say, that's a terrible idea. How about this? Cities, projects of citywide significance. One of the most notable projects is the M, and that was a project of citywide significance. Nobody had ever done that before, turn a former store the size of what was the Bon Marche into apartments. We can define criteria for new multi-family mixed-use innovative development that would qualify for matching dollars from the general fund, and we'd have to put a cap on it up to a certain amount. So I think the cap before, Candace, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was 5 million, but I'm not sure.
I think it's been two different levels, but it could be 5 million now.
Okay. Then the infrastructure grant, this was a grant program that we passed through legal because we weren't sure if it was going to be gifting or not. And essentially, what it did was offer up to $40,000 for a developer to use to put in a larger water main to accommodate fire suppression. And it really, if you're a small developer, that can make the difference between your project going or your project not going. And we funded that up to $250,000, I think, over a two-year period. And people just took advantage of it, and it was wildly successful. The examples of that are David's Pizza on the other side of the river, Tanarak, which is towards the west end of downtown, I think the Big Dipper, was it Big Dipper? Yeah, Big Dipper. So those are all examples of owners who took advantage of that and made a difference in their project. Then we have commercial rates for multi-family development. So we have two buildings that are on West First, and they were redeveloped, they were commercial, they were redeveloped as single fam, or as multi-family, and the commercial water rate, sewer rate was less than what residential would be. So what we did was, we offered that commercial rate, even though there were people living there, and it was apartments, we offered that commercial rate for a period of time. So I'm proposing that we try that again to get some of these buildings up and going. And then we have affordable housing impact fee incentive, and that would define criteria for affordable single-family and multi-family development that would qualify for a transportation impact fee waiver. So you wouldn't need to pay that. The one thing I did not put on here was for us to look at MFTEs again because we did open that up a couple of years ago. We adjusted the boundaries, and we need to look at again. I know some council members had angst around offering exemptions for people that were doing market rate. And so what I've heard from developers is one of the, one of the most used incentives is MFTEs. But I really think we need to look at it again separately and dig deep to find out what we should be doing, what not is just allowable, but, and what is going on at the state level as well. So I'd love to have some feedback from you all if you have questions or if you think there are things. Jacoby's taking notes, so if you want to make adjustments or have questions, please let me know the way you can.
I think.
By no means is it ready for primetime. This is the first pass.
Yep. Michael Cathcart has his hand, and after that, Karen Stratten, but.
Okay.
Council Member Cathcart.
Yeah, just a question, question and a comment. Sorry, I have to be off-camera for right now. I guess my question is just curiosity in why we let these lapse the last time, kind of what happened that precipitated that. And then the comment is, I think one thing that might be good to include here, especially if we're going to double down on centers and corridors, is fee waivers for upzoning in that quarter-mile distance from those centers and corridors. And so that might be something also to include here.
Okay. Fee waivers. Thank you. And your first question, some of these lapsed because we didn't put more money into them, like the $40,000 grant, the council just didn't allocate more money, I don't know why. And the five, the projects of citywide significance, I think that was a time when we had a lot of money left over at the end of the year, decided to put that as a priority. And then when the money was gone, we, again, just didn't get reauthorized. Bad on us, you know. They just kind of fell off everybody's radar. And I think that's why I decided, hey, we did these before, they worked well, people liked them, let's consider them again.
Yeah, I was just going to confirm. It's just all about money, Council Member. We just, we had a bunch of money for strategic initiatives, we funded it, and then it did not have a champion after that to come back. So, great point. Council Member Stratten.
So just a couple points, Lori. We might want to look at, if I remember, Candace might remember more. I remember it was last year or maybe two years ago that our planning department was looking at the North Monroe Road corridor and doing surveys and collecting data. So that might be something to get to as far as housing, to see what they found. I thought that that was moving forward and we were going to see that eventually in that area. So that's good to bring that up. My fifth comment is, where does this fit, Council President, with the committees that have been formed to talk about affordable housing in Spokane, options, that kind of thing? And is this something that should be shared with one of those committees to have them work on it? Is this going to be part of that, I guess is my question.
Yeah, it definitely, so I think the first Housing Action Subcommittee meeting is coming up, is it this week or next week? It's today. Yeah. Okay, so this is their very first meeting, so they're mostly getting organized. I doubt they'll be considering this particular issue. But yeah, that is the purpose of that committee, is to run anything through there. But just to put this in context, Council Member Kinnear has just been working on this before the Housing Action Plan draft was released, but I'm imagining that we're folding this into the Housing Action Plan response. So we have this plan, and, you know, I spoke with some planners in the last week, and I said, you know, this plan seems like more of a report and less of a plan with recommendations. And that's, that's apparently how a lot of cities have done it, but not all. Some have actually come up with a plan and says, these are the priorities, these are what we're going to do. So I'm imagining that we, after, I think we have another study session or so with planning staff with these ideas, and then there's a whole bunch of other ideas I've sent to other council members that we're talking about, that we will come back as a council and say, all right, thanks for the report, here's the plan, these are our priorities, and this is what the resources are going to take. Just going back to your Monroe Street, that was supposed to be done, but as you know, we're down three planners and a planning director, and they just, it fell off the work plan just because we didn't have the people to do it. So that's definitely just teed up and ready to go if we can hire those people. So there's so many things that we can do, and I'm just hoping that as the policymaking body for the city, we've typically deferred to the mayor's office for some direction, but given the situation, I think we're just going to need to really lead on it and then ask the mayor to work on implementing these policy goals. So.
So if I could add something to, just a second, Candace, I could add something here. I was asked to not present this today by our city administrator, and I said, no, I think that council needs to weigh in on this first before the staff comes in. I think this is up to us to set out what we want to do and then give staff the opportunity to weigh in. I think it would be a waste of staff's time to come to us and say, well, that won't work, or we're not going to do this, or have you thought about that? We need, as a body, we need to decide what we want to do and then send it to staff. So I just wanted to make that crystal clear. So sorry, Council Member Moon.
No, I support this, and I know we have a lot of new people in the administration, and I think that they're starting to trust us, to lean on us, because we've had several years working with staff on developing just these things. And so I'm excited to bring these forward. And what I'm really excited about what you've done here, which is tremendous work, Council Member Kinnear, is it all fits in the comprehensive plan. This is not something that's going to take six months or 18 months, or we have to hire people necessarily to do. There might be some shifting. This is completely consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's already been tested in the downtown area, it shows that it works. So I'm very excited to support all of these. I think we have to be a little cautious about waiving fees completely. I'd rather see everyone have a little skin in the game, so maybe when we're looking at the assessment, I like that there's a sunset on some of those. Maybe it's a percentage, like 50%, if it's affordable, they get 50%. If it's 50% affordable, something like that. There might be a way to do a ratio, not an all or nothing. I just, I'm not real big on just free, free, free. And I also want to make sure it's contained inside existing centers and corridors. When you go outside of a corridor or a center, that's where you just chew right into a neighborhood without having the neighborhood's voice. And that's that sensitive transition area that has caused us so many problems, where you have garbage trucks in a commercial zone backing up to someone's home. And we want to have that transition. So we have to be real cautious and careful with that. But I support all of these and where you're going, and maybe we'd have a few more. This is just, to me, a split the switch, turn a light on, let's get this up and going.
Thank you. And you'll have more time to read through this, think about what else you'd like to see. Send your comments to Jacoby, please, so that we can consolidate all of them, and then at some point, present the final piece. And I'm not, I'm kind of on the fast track here, so I don't want to wait, as you said, Council Member Moon, I want to get this going, up and running. We all have a sense of urgency, so I'd really like to get this going. And Brian has a hand up.
I just, thank you, Council Member Kinnear. I just wanted to reiterate that our policy team is ready at any moment to go help you flush out and help implement these, these or any other proposals. So please don't hesitate to contact myself or Melissa Morrison, and we can help get these going on a fast track.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I wanted to note a couple things. If I'm correct, none of this has to go through the Plan Commission process. It's just, it's just money, so we don't have to, there are other proposals that will take time. But essentially, you know, with some tweaks, these are all programs that we've already established. So staff has already come up with this. You know, the world has changed a little bit, so we might want to tweak it a bit. But, so it's really mostly about funding it. And we do have, even though you only mentioned the American Recovery Plan money for, I think, one of the first ones, it's potentially deployable across all of them, at least for the next couple of years to just get started. But it's really about funding them and then getting staff, whether it's council staff to do a little tweaking on the language to give direction to administration staff, and then giving it to administration staff to just say, hey, update the pro forma on this, and then let's start marketing it to people. So it could be in the field pretty quickly. Council Member Stratten.
So this probably can't be answered during this meeting, but it's something we might want to think about. So what do we do if we move this forward and we still have housing committees working on plans and future opportunities, and it's in direct conflict with this?
Yeah.
Is there, are we going to have a way to, and I don't know what that conflict, I'm just thinking if the housing committee comes up with something that would conflict with this, what do we do?
Well, can you give us an example? Because I'm confused as to what would conflict.
So like, one of the thoughts is that what Candace had said is the centers and corridors and affordable housing opportunities. Then there's, there's other conversations about build-
Then there's, there's other conversations about building and developing in neighborhoods affordable housing, single family or multifamily. Is that going to be a conflict?
Yeah.
If we say in a statement that this should only be in centers and corridors, is that going to conflict with the menu of opportunities to construct and develop within neighborhoods closer, maybe closer to centers and corridors, but within the neighborhoods themselves? Am I...
So, I think probably we need to define the centers and corridors piece, because...
That might help.
We could go an eighth of a mile, let's say, let's take Monroe, for example. You could go an eighth of a mile either direction away from Monroe and still be, have this be applicable, because it is, and Councilmember Mum was talking about transition zones, so say you have multifamily right on Monroe, or a couple, or a block from Monroe, then maybe you'd have fourplexes, then maybe, or townhouses, then duplexes. So, you have this gradual transition to single family. So, you don't have a five-story apartment building right next to a single-family house. Does that make sense? And you're going somewhat into the neighborhood, you're not just sticking along that line of Monroe.
It does make sense, but I don't know if it, we have two committees out there working on affordable housing. So, that's my concern, is at what point, if there is a conflict...
Yeah, I don't see that there would be. I guess we deal with it when it happens, but I can't fathom that it would.
Council President?
Yeah, I just, I had one thing to say, and also I got Councilmember Cathcart's hand up before. But I was just going to say, so you're asking kind of a process question, Councilmember Stratton. And so, I think there's two answers to that. First, even though we're saying we can go on this quickly, that doesn't mean we can't run it by our committee. So, we can still run it by the committee and ask them, do you see a conflict in this? But the other thing is, the way this is written is it's providing incentives for centers and corridors. We haven't defined what centers and corridors quite mean yet, is it eighth mile, is it a quarter mile? But it's not conflicting with anything. What would happen is, they may recommend, hey, expand it, you know, but spending it in the centers and corridors proper is not going to be conflicting. Really, the question is, how far is it extended? So, I don't think there'll be anything that we would approve that would stop anything else from happening in those committees, is the way procedurally. But I had a hand from Councilmember Cathcart, and then Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, thank you. Real quick, yeah, I don't see a direct conflict. I mean, it could be maybe with resource allocation or something like that, but, but I think all of this has to work hand in hand if we're going to address the crisis that we're facing. But, you know, the thing is, on the centers and corridors, you're going to predominantly produce more rental capacity and not a lot of ownership opportunities. And so, I think there's also something in here about single family. Well, we just don't have a lot of places to do that. And so, if we're going to be able to accommodate, you know, single-family homes below that 250K price point, you know, we're going to have to increase density in some areas of town, single-family neighborhoods to, to make that possible. So, I think all of this is going to have to work hand in hand together. The only real conflict I would see would just be that resource allocation, and that's, that's something that we could discuss down the road if we need to.
Councilmember Mum?
Yeah. You know, I know that the thought is that it'd be mostly rental, but I think if you visit many of our centers, you'll find that's not the case, that there's many single-family owners inside centers all over the city. And yes, people actually do like to live on arterial sometimes. And so, it's, centers are pretty big. We think of it more like the shopping center area, but the actual map is fairly big. So, I think there's a variety of housing types that are allowed in the centers. And I'm not concerned about a conflict, because what keeps us from conflicting is the whole comprehensive plan. And we are charged with being consistent with the comp plan, and what's nice about this is that it's, all the things that are being proposed are very easily doable, we know they work, we've done them before, most of them. The other things that are being discussed, because there's a long menu, I think, Council President, you were kind of putting those all together, or maybe Hamily was with 25 things. Some of those things are going to be big lifts, because they're in direct conflict with our comprehensive plan. That's a larger discussion and a legal discussion that could take several years. So, what I like is that the stuff that's being proposed now for incentives can happen right now, within the next six months, and then maybe some of those other ideas the housing group can work on to kind of create a timeline of how long would it take? And my hope is that they would show what the outcomes would be. There's been a lot of great ideas, but I think we need to look at, how much does it cost? How long is it going to take? And how many units do we really anticipate are going to be produced? Because I think that will help us make some decisions.
Yeah, I think shorthand is to say, anything that's proposed in this doesn't conflict with all the other proposals that are more far-ranging and reaching and, you know, a little bit, in some people's minds, outside the box. But so, yes, there's nothing that we do here that would preclude any other super innovative ideas out there that people are championing. I'm wondering, I haven't heard from you, Councilmember Wilkerson, I just want to make sure if you had any thoughts about this conversation.
I do thank you. And first of all, thank you, Councilmember Kinnear, being new in this arena. I don't know if all of our citizens, or even some of our developers, were aware of these programs that had been existing around. Feels like historical knowledge, almost, got to be here a while to know what's going on. I only would question the $250,000, if that figure is a little low, based on the market that we're in going forward. And my clarity, these have been stood up at some point in time in our city structure, and so we would just be reactivating them? Is that, okay. So, just increasing the amount of housing is the only really contribution I have, but I think it's great. And I would like that multifamily tax exemption to be another discussion, especially if it's not around, you know, increasing affordable housing.
I thought the MFTE was probably too much for us to do all at once. So, the $250,000, I just wanted to clarify, that was what we initially put in the pot, and you're right, it went fairly quickly. It took up a head of steam to get off, and Elton Brown was administering that program, and people just glopped onto it and said, this is great. And we had the option of replenishing that, which we did once, and then it didn't happen again. And again, I just, I think just dropped off our radar. But we can always replenish these little pots. We don't, just because we put 250 in, doesn't mean then when it's gone, we can't put another whatever amount in.
Yeah. And I think Councilmember Wilkerson was not referring to that particular funding amount, but what classifies as affordable and attainable housing. I think that's the point you were making.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Yep, no, but your points are great. I did, I, you reminded me, though, that I did want to talk about MFTE just briefly. One, in terms of potential expansions, you know, I think we've all heard from the University District Association, they're hoping that we can expand MFTE throughout the entire university district. They actually have several housing projects going in now, and they, they're committed to more, so they've made that request. So, that is one area that, you know, probably fits the criteria regardless of your views on other parts of MFTE. And then I also spoke with staff yesterday and got an update. As you might recall, the legislature made some significant changes in the MFTE state laws, and I asked, when are we going to get some guidance on that? And so, they're essentially waiting. Department of Commerce is going to come up with guidance. The law doesn't go into effect until the end of July, I think. But I've requested, well, I request, I didn't really request, because if I'm going to make a request, I'm going to run it by City Administrator Perkins. But I asked if a request would be welcome to get us briefed on the changes, because they will impact us. And I, again, I think, as you mentioned, MFTE is one of the most popular incentives that we have, and it generated 900 units under contract in the last 16 months. So, I think we should, so it's a proven product. There's discussion about perhaps to increase the amount of units that are affordable, if they want to get the 12-year, or maybe have to be a certain amount of units affordable for any, and also potentially slicing off, you know, the million-dollar properties, because we may not need to subsidize those. But, you know, those discussions are out there. But again, that's another program that's well-developed and defined by staff, so that will not be hard to tweak that, once we undertake that, so. Any other? So, next step, sounds like Councilmember Kinnear might be to share with the policy team, and they could flesh out language in those places where you say, tweak this and define this.
Yeah. Yeah, and incorporate Jacoby's notes with what you just saw, then we'll add those notes in, before we give it to the policy team.
Yeah.
And we'll give them a deadline, if that's okay with you, Brian, so that they have some parameters. And we'll just keep moving this forward. And again, if you have extra thoughts after this meeting, please send them to Jacoby. This is not a one-shot thing. So, at midnight tonight, Councilmember Stratton, you might have some brilliant idea, but don't call him at midnight, just...
It'll be at 2:00 in the morning.
Much better.
And I'll call you.
Yeah.
I'll text you.
Perfect. Thank you. So, thank you, everybody. I appreciate the feedback and the support, and we'll just get this going.
All right. Okay, next up is Downtown Plan. As you know, the Downtown Plan has gotten community comment, it's gotten Planning Commission or Plan Commission comment, and they recommend it moving forward. And then now it's up to us, so any adjustments that we want to make before we go to a final vote. And I've had a little, we'll get to potential specifics in a moment, but just so you know, I've had a little back and forth with staff on how do you, you know, we're the decision-makers, so whatever comes to us from Plan Commission, we, it's our job to make any adjustments we think are the, in the best interest of the city. But it's always a little tricky under state law, because they want to make sure that the public gets to comment on anything and has a chance for engagement. So, what becomes tricky is, we get a draft from the Plan Commission, and then how do we get our ideas, adjustments that we're probably going to vote to change on whatever the last draft was, but allow the public to comment on it? So, it still remains a mystery of me, for me, and I'm imagining other council members as well, not all, because some have been here much longer than me and have a planning background. But it is just, it's just never clear to me when we are supposed to put council's imprint on it and comply with state law. So, I've been trying to get that clarified, not quite done yet with it. But what I want to do today, and I see Michael Cathcart's hand, so, Councilmember, I'll get to you. What I'm hoping to do is, I made a list of 11 potential adjustments, clarifications to the plan, and then I was just wanting to go around the room on all of them and find out what people's thoughts are. So, then we, whatever we come up with of how we're going to amend the final plan, whether it's by resolution, or writing the plan in track change format, or whatever we come up with, we can do that with a sense of where the support is for particular changes, or not support for particular changes. But before we go to that, Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, you may already have the same line of thinking that I had. I was thinking perhaps we could just pick a date by which we need to lay our amendments on the table, and then provide a week for the public to review, and, and then we could get that feedback in whatever kind of way makes the most sense. But the 11 you put together, are these yours, or are these kind of an accumulation from our last meeting that we all kind of opined on?
They are an accumulation through my lens, though, because some of them, like, one of them for sure, I know for you, you'll be like, no, that's, that's not the way I want to go, I want to go another way. So, it was my attempt at accumulation, but on any ones where I had a strong disagreement with someone, I put my version down, but knowing that we would have this discussion, so we could find out how people thought, so, so, yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't, we could probably put that up on the screen, and again, my idea is just to go through them one at a time, answer clarifying questions of what it is we're talking about, and, and then just get, if people have strong thoughts in either direction or ideas, just make a note of them, and then we'll come up with some process that we still haven't quite defined yet, so. And some of them already, I had, you know, feedback from staff of like, oh, that's, that's incorrect. Mostly number 11 on the Main Street visioning, they corrected me that it's not two-way Main Street, it's one-way but with a new configuration, so. But, so feel free to chime in if it's like completely inaccurate in how it is. All right. All right, so the first one, this had to do, you might recall that Councilmember Kinnear proposed some additional language for public safety staffing, and I think planning staff weren't too excited about that, but I believe the Planning Commission endorsed. So, just to be clear, the language in this is not the specific language necessarily, it's just a kind of a placeholder. So, this first one was adequate public safety staffing stationed in the downtown precinct and adequate public sanitary infrastructure, that's garbage cans, bathrooms, water fountains, things like that. By the way, just heard from City Administrator that he has taken us up on our request to put, I think, 12 more Big Belly garbage recycling in downtown strategically, so that's an improvement. But anyway, so that's this first one, is having adequate police-type resources in the precinct downtown and public sanitary infrastructure. So, just any thoughts? And I can't see everybody, so, but I see Councilmember Stratton. So, you go first, but feel free to just volunteer if I'm not seeing...
So, just looking at this first one, downtown should have, I would think downtown will have, and how do we force that? We have a precinct downtown right now that has been locked up and nobody's home. And I know we're getting, we're remedying that, but how do we make that happen? How do we push forward on that?
Councilmember Kinnear has an answer for you.
Well, it's an answer, it might not be the right one. So, for the downtown plan, we're trying not to make things in it operational. In other words, mandating that you will have something, a downtown precinct, and it will be staffed with so many people would be an operational piece. And what, this one, number one and number two, I worked with the Downtown Spokane Partnership to come up with a compromise that they could live with and that planning could live with. And that's what you're seeing for these two. And you're absolutely right, it should be open, it should be staffed, but for a downtown plan, it wouldn't necessarily be the best place to put something like that.
And I would just add...
Thank you. I just think it's a, we've seen the burden that it places on those downtown ambassadors, and so it kind of, with no police presence downtown, it puts another organization in a bad situation, because they can only do so much. So, that does make sense.
It, just, and again, this is just my thinking about this, and there's people with more experience than me, but we're putting this in writing as the plan, not necessarily how to implement it exactly, for longer than any of us will be on council. So, it will be there regardless of whether we're, who the mayor is, and then anyone, any council member who wants to try to make this happen will then have this document to say, hey, it's in the plan, we agreed on this, and that'll just be more leverage. But in and of itself, it doesn't do anything. It doesn't operationalize anything, but, that's a good point. Okay, the second one, very similar to the first, it's just that I divided up the public safety and the services for people experiencing homelessness, because again, that was a big debate, and Councilmember Kinnear came up with some language. I didn't try to recreate the language, but it's just to say that it, you can't have a vibrant downtown without addressing some of the issues that are down there, and that's one focus point of issues. But any, any comments on either...
Council President?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess number two to me kind of seems a little bit like the opposite of what was included in the Plan Commission process, which was that we essentially have these provisions citywide, not just downtown. And so, this sounds like we're saying, no, 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 they shouldn't be citywide, they should only be downtown, or primarily downtown, I guess, is kind of how I'm, I'm reading that. But... But regardless of that, I would, I would include some language in there that also maybe talks about somehow, you know, clean up, making sure that there's not camping. You know, if we're going to get into the, these services and stuff like that, there should be some other, I think, pieces to that, just to make sure that it's affecting all sides.
And just to be clear-
Council President.
Yeah, I'll get, I didn't want to, I didn't, the intent was not to preclude citywide services, but that's a good call-out. It's just that if they're not, if the services aren't addressed robustly, then you're going to have the downtown issues. But go ahead, Councilmember Kinnear.
Both of one and two were, one was passed through FTD, make sure that it worked for them. Number two was passed through CUPA to make sure that it worked for him as well. And again, we might want to make sure that we're not being operational, and this is going to outlive us. It's going to be good for 10 years. And we had a lot of debate about that, and DSP did want to make it more of a citywide thing. And the pushback from planning was, no, you're, you can't, you can't tell other parts of the city what they're, what they can or cannot do. This has to be specific to downtown. And that's why that piece was taken out, if that makes sense.
And I have a little, a little idea on how to get your point across there of just putting some language, in addition to any citywide services that are taking, just something to kind of note that, because I, and I also just wanted to say, we have our laws on the books for camping and sit and lie and things like that. The only reason they aren't able to be enforced is because there are inadequate services that trigger the Boise decision. But I think Councilmember Wilkerson had her hand raised, yeah.
Yes, so on number two, does the downtown businesses really have control, the businesses, the downtown partnership, have control over sheltering services? That's a city service. So that is my, so I'm trying to read, I know it's a high level, but really, it's in their plan. Where would execution come in at?
Yeah, no, the city, I mean, the downtown plan is for the city government. That's what we're, that's what we're, it's like, what do we have, what leverage do we have as a city government to do something that sometimes it's we directly act, and then other times we create an environment that will hopefully empower private sector to act? Like when we're talking about, oh, we want to make it easier to have better parking structures. So if we want more covered parking structures downtown, that would be a private sector job to fund and build and operate them, but maybe we can change zoning, or, you know, incentives, or whatever it is that we would do. So it really is the downtown plan through the lens of what government can and can't do. Councilmember Mumm.
Yeah, no, Councilmember Wilkinson, I can see, that was a really good question, a really good clarification. So just a quick history, the downtown plan was really our first sub-area neighborhood plan, and it started in 1998. It was adopted prior to the overall city comprehensive plan, which came in 2001. And it was really the foundation for the whole centers and corridors concept, because this is our biggest center. So it's like a mass, in a way, center plan, but it's very specific, and it is, like Council President said, for the city. This gets updated before, because of the cycle that it goes through about every 10 years, and we have the ability to edit it, just like we would in the other comprehensive plan amendments.
Any other comments for one or two? Then, number three, we've been talking with the bid leadership and DSP leadership as managers for the bid about expanding bid services beyond the, essentially beyond the Viaduct South, because so many more businesses are there, and many of them have been requesting, "Hey, we want to be part of the ambassadors, part of the clean green. It's a lot cheaper for them to pay their bid assessments than it is to hire their own people." And the process for doing that is, you either, you can expand by 10% a year based on revenue by city council just doing it, or you can, if you want to expand more than that, you have to get an affirmative vote of the sector that you're trying to add by the property owners. And Lori mentioned this was kind of sounding operational, so I just said, "Well, let's put something in the appendix just that kind of mentions that this process is going on." Again, not to force anyone to do anything, but just to say, "Hey, this would be the vision. Let's have the entire downtown boundary served by its bid board and have the same level of," it's not the exact same level of services, because they pay different assessment rates based on the level of service, but they would at least have access to that. So that's just an idea. If anyone has any comments on that. All right. Number four, kind of a small thing, but you might know or be familiar that there's been a long-time effort to create a cultural trail through the downtown, which is kind of a virtual map with art and historical installations that would encourage especially visitors to town, to go from the far, from Brown's Edition essentially all the way to the University District and capture their attention in a walking or bicycling fashion. And so there was some question about whether it would be on Riverside or First Avenue. And it looks like the map is Riverside, but because that was of some, some discussion, and Spokane Arts really wants it on Riverside primarily, it's not the entire way, there's some jogs. But I just wanted to put those words in, so, if anyone had thoughts about that. The next one is probably the most controversial one, number five, and that has to do with language about the two parking lots overlooking Riverfront Park where Cyrus O'Leary's used to be. And Councilmember Kinnear said, potentially, we just shouldn't have it at all because it's very operational. I said, "Well, let's just say, let's get those developed, but stay within the height limits that all the community members seem to be favoring." And then, of course, DSP really wants to raise those and for their interests. And I know Councilmember Cathcart, I think you, you were in favor of that as well for logical reasons as well. But I just, I had this language in, so I had two alternatives. One, just take it out, which is Councilmember Kinnear's preference, or amend it to say, "No, let's get it developed within existing height limits if we can," essentially, before we talk about taking those off in a way that would shade the park. But that's the thing. Councilmember Stratton, and then Kinnear.
So I seem to remember meetings a couple of years ago when we talked about this, and I thought there was an agreement on height limits. Am I wrong? When we were, when the other steering committee was working on the downtown plan, when there was a steering committee put together, and I'm sure council members met with, I know Mark Richard and others, but I thought we had come to an agreement on that.
We, we never did. There was a proposal to raise the height limit, and we never reached an agreement. So, but we had a lot of conversations, you are correct.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Yes. I wanted to comment that in 2018, the Plan Commission at the time came up with a recommendation. We have essentially a lot of new people. I would say half of Plan Commissioners are new. So I'm wondering if it doesn't have to be revisited by the Plan Commission. But the other piece is, as a council, and now we have new council members, and we're going to have more new council members at the end of the year, as a council, we couldn't agree. So we had some folks wanting to just get rid of the height limit, you know, the sky's your limit, others wanted 300, some wanted 200. There just wasn't a consensus. And I think for us to stick this in here, when it was so controversial, it needs more thought, and it needs us to really find out what the public, the public at the time did not want a higher limit down there. So I think we really need to revisit it. It's just too controversial to just put in and say, "Okay, we're good to go." I, and I'd like to talk to the people who own those lots, too, and have, see what they have to say. I talked to the developer, but I didn't get the information that I needed. I'd like to talk to the actual lot owners and find out, "Okay, what's your, what's your bottom line? What do you actually need to have happen to develop these?" And that, that conversation hasn't taken place, to my knowledge.
Council President.
Councilmember Cathcart, yes.
Yeah, I guess, to me, and I made this argument the last time, but if we're looking at these lots and we say, "We need these to be redeveloped, we don't want surface lots," what has been the biggest obstacle then, all these years? And I probably agree with most on the council, there probably needs to be some state law changes regarding how we tax surface parking. But given that that's not the case right now, I think we have to think about how do we remove obstacles? You know, we want people living downtown. A thousand units downtown is a thousand units that's potentially not getting built in Southgate or Five Mile or Indian Trail. And so, you know, you want people living downtown, you want a vibrant downtown, and so anything we can do to incentivize, which is the next number down, incentivizing, anything we can do to incentivize that development to occur in the core is a, is a good thing. And so if removing these height limits is what it takes to get some good quality development going where we need more people, I am in favor of it. And, and I, I don't, I've never seen that survey that you mentioned last time that was conducted, I've asked around about it, and it sounds like it might have been a staff survey monkey survey, but nothing that was scientific. But, but regardless, I would favor just simply removing reference to it so that we could continue to discuss this as we move forward if there's no agreement on, on how to put it into the plan.
Yeah. Councilmember Kinnear.
Yes, thanks. When I talked with DSP back, you know, 2018 or whatever it was, there was no mention of these two lots being housing. What they did want to do, and what the developer wanted to do, not the owner, but the developer wanted to do was put in office and then have businesses down below, like coffee shops. There was no mention of housing. And they felt they could get a better price for office and have one company take over the entire building, like a Google or something like that, rather than put in housing. And so that was part of my angst as well. Okay, we want, we want housing, but that was not what was going to be happening for these two. So I think we have to be really intentional about the way we go forward with this. And if we want housing, then let's specify housing.
Councilmember Stratton.
I just want to share that when I had the discussions that I can remember, housing was included when they were talking about kind of a multi-purpose building, that there would be office space, there are even drawings, there was retail at the bottom, and there was housing included. Now, the question may have been, would it be affordable housing? Probably not. But housing was a part of that. And I hate to lose the conversation because it's just going to come back. We're going to be talking about this for a long time. So I don't know if we can find a way, rather than removing it completely, if we can find a way to word it to where it's something that is a continuing, continuing process, especially with the height limits, it seems to me, was the big deal. But no, I do remember that there were, they were contemplating the housing, and it could be a part of those developments. So I hate to see the whole thing, so I would still like to keep something in there about it.
Councilmember Mumm.
I just want to clarify, we're just talking along Spokane Falls Boulevard, right?
Yep, just two parcels.
And it was park sensitivity. There's no height limits anywhere else in downtown.
Correct. No, there's plenty of other places to build towers.
Yeah. And I just want to throw out there, I think, I think it's good that we're, we can be as flexible as possible while still meeting our goals. I think downtown is in flux with, you know, COVID and the remote use of office space. I just don't know where it's all going. I don't think anyone does. So I think we do have to look at mixed use, like you said, Councilmember Stratton. There's, there's going to be more of an interest in converting some of that office space to housing. And I know nationally, Rocket Mortgage is working on some federal programs to do some incentives on the federal level for people who will move office space into housing because it's expensive with plumbing.
Yeah. Yeah. I, one, one thing that I saw in the draft plan that I was intrigued by is that they said there's not been a real estate analysis either of these two lots or other lots that are available for towers. And that was always my, the last time we had this debate, when people were telling me, you know, a 10-story building just doesn't work. And I'm like, "Well, show me the, show me that, because River Park Square is right there, the Grand Hotel is right there." You know, it's like, "No, let me know. I think you could do a really cool building, even if a particular developer wants to do a 20 or a 30-story, that doesn't mean you can't make money." So I think that's missing, both in terms of what are the options, and that might be a, this would be operational, but that might be a way forward, is to, is to say, "Well, let's actually get an independent real estate developer kind of consultant and say, 'Hey, what are the possibilities both for these lots, for within the height limits that wouldn't shade the park, and what are other lots for people who want to build other towers?'" But I'm, I will work on some language. There's kind of two possibilities. One is just to remove it. The other is to, I think, from what I'm hearing, is keep the language, but make it clear that we're, we're staying within the height limits until we reach a different agreement, but we still want to develop those. Because if we could develop those parcels within the height limits, I think everybody wants to do that. I don't think anyone wants those parking lots. So I'm, I'll play around with a little bit of language on that. But that's helpful. And then, Councilmember Wilkerson, I don't know if you weighed in on that, but I wanted to make sure if you had an opinion on that.
Well, I was going to say, before you took off, that I did want to leave the language of least pursuing, because obviously this conversation has started and stopped over the years, and we've gone nowhere. So if it's pursue is still in there-
Okay.
-some type of redevelopment, I think that would stand us in good stead. At least it wouldn't get lost again.
Yep. Okay. Great. All right, thanks, everyone. So number six was, this is language that's already in there about incentives, and I just wanted to add in language for attainable multifamily development, so that we made it clear that we're trying to focus our efforts on the missing middle. Doesn't preclude other developments, but just to focus on that. So that's just, it was really just adding attainable. Any comments about that? All right. Number seven is totally Brian's personal on getting the parking kiosks downtown. But I, we, I did, we got an extensive email from Chris Becker, and it was, again, well-organized and thought out. I did not reply all, because that's illegal for me to reply all on the OPMA, but I did send her back some comments on that. But I'm curious about, this is a great time to talk about kiosks versus meters in the downtown retail core, whether or not we should go the kiosk route or stick with the meters. So I'm interested in what people think about that. In general, it goes far beyond the downtown plan thing. So, one, I'm interested in your opinion, and then, secondly, whether or not you think language should be in the downtown plan about that one or the other. So, anyone have thoughts about kiosks versus meters? Councilmember Stratton.
I just have a question. So can you, so I understand, because I know this is important to you, can you tell me why? Why kiosks over meters?
Yeah. So my understanding out of the parking study and from Julie Dixon, our consultant, is that the way things are going is you use kiosks, pay by phone, or people can go to the kiosk if they want, and then you do your enforcement with these vehicles with license plate recognition. So you really are changing the thing. Instead of having people walk along the meters, is it out, or, you know, are they out or not? It's just much higher tech and easier to pay, easier to maintain, cheaper in the long run. And that's just where parking is going. So to me, if we're going to invest millions of dollars in new infrastructure, it's just, I just think we should go to the next generation and not hang on to that. So that's, that's me. And as you saw from Shawna's memo to you, we did survey multiple- And as you saw from Shawna's memo to you, we did survey multiple other cities, including the one that Julie Dixon recommended, which was San Francisco, because she said, oh, they don't want to do kiosks in San Francisco. So all those cities either have done it and they prefer it, easier to maintain, easier to enforce, or are going in that direction. So that's me. You've turned me into a parking nerd on the Parking Advisory Commission for several years and now that. So anyway, that's my.
So here's my question. So for those of us that aren't as high-tech.
Yep.
So I go downtown and I park at a meter, and I do have the thing on my phone where I can put in my number when you're here, okay?
Yep.
I get out of my car locket, I leave.
Yep.
And I know I've got parking for two hours.
Yep.
So to me, that's just convenient.
Yep.
So what happens to this population that likes that as opposed to having to lock your car? Do you have to go to a?
No, no, you get to do that.
All online.
So that.
You do it all online.
What happens is you still have that little meter pole with the number that you need to plug into your phone? That's still there. So you don't have to go to the kiosk. The only reason you would have to go to the kiosk is if you wanted to pay with coins or a credit card, you would then walk. So it would encourage you to pay by phone from your car as opposed to paying by coins. Because to pay by coins, you would have to walk a few yards to the kiosk and pay there.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess for me, I'm somewhat agnostic when it comes to the kiosk versus the parking meters. Similar to Councilmember Stratton, I just want to make sure people don't have to go to the kiosk, get a ticket, go back to their car. It's just such a pain in the butt. So as long as that's not the issue, I'm fairly agnostic. My only concern or thought, I guess, is just how specific do we want to be when it comes to technology? As rapidly as technology changes and improves, I mean, we're probably pretty close to having, you know, self-driving cars that are going to be out there on the roadways pretty commonly. A lot of things are going to change very quickly over the next few years. And I just wonder how specific on tech do we want to be in this plan that's supposed to last for quite a while?
That's a great point. And I wrote a note to myself to be less specific, so not even really mention kiosks and meters, but just use the latest parking infrastructure technology. So something like that. I think that's a good point.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Council President.
Yep.
I would have to agree with Councilmember Cathcart. I think this is too specific and it kind of locks us in to what's going to happen within the next five years. And who knows what's going to happen in the next 10 years? We'll all have chips in our brains and we'll be walking around with a phone and you'll know exactly where we are. So I'd like to be vague about this and again, not operational.
Yep.
And I know it's something that you're very passionate about, so I don't want to rain on your parade.
Yeah.
But I think it's time to perhaps let this go.
Yep.
And as Councilmember Stratton said, there are people that just want to put coins in meters and get on with whatever they're going to do downtown. So we have to accommodate them as well. But I'd really like to be less specific about this, about number seven.
I even agree with you both. Anything else? Parking kiosks, meters, plan language? All right. So number eight, there is, some of the DSP staff have been arguing all along that essentially parking meter revenue should go to do infrastructure changes downtown based on the model in Pasadena, California. And so part of me, when I wrote this, was like, yeah, I was pushing back a little bit. Let's be broader. We can use it for anything that would help downtown. But after thinking about it and listening to people about not being so specific, I think maybe it should be the opposite. It's just the language should be more general and less specific and just say, hey, net meters can be, revenue can be to support the downtown plan, you know, something as general as that. So I see some head nods, but I can't see everybody's head. But if anyone else has comments on that?
Great idea.
Okay.
You can tell that Councilmember Kinnear has learned how to use the emojis. I'm so impressed.
That's awesome. The next one, number nine, there's some specific language in there about, I think, giving some incentives to update buildings and things like that. And I just thought we should call out the Washington Clean Building Act. I don't know, we haven't really been briefed by staff yet on council, but a couple of years ago, the legislature made some requirements for buildings over 50,000 feet, square feet that people have to comply with. And I was just thinking we could help people comply with that state law, not impose city regulations, but just help people. But I see Councilmember Cathcart has his hand raised.
Yeah, and actually just touched on it. I would love to get a debrief on the Clean Buildings Act. Just generally aware of it, but not too specifically. So anything we could get done in terms of a study session or just some future briefing on that would be really beneficial. And then, of course, you know, I had said, I just would rather we don't do local mandates on some of that stuff. And so I think you kind of touched on that. But the other thought I had was if there are some requirements from that Clean Buildings Act, some language in there about assisting with CPACER-type funding. And I know there's some issues trying to get that done with the county, but something in there with CPACER, I think, would be beneficial because that's probably going to be one of the few ways that some of these folks have to probably meet those standards.
Yeah. I'll look and see, I went to an educational piece online by McKinstry a few months ago. And what I don't know, but I can find out, is whether or not they recorded it. And if not, we've just been meeting with McKinstry a little bit. And as you may or may not know, McKinstry is in the business of helping government and private building owners create efficiencies and then pay for the infrastructure upgrade with the efficiencies. So lower utility bills, things like that. So they're in that business. I'm sure they would present to us if I can't get ahold of that already, one that's already done.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So. Okay. Next one, this is super small, but in the plan, it says designate the Rookery Block as an opportunity site for a public-private partnership. And I think it is a great opportunity site. It's on, so Howard and Riverside and between Riverside and Sprague, kind of near the Rid Path. It used to be old buildings. Now it's a big parking lot, just seems to be waiting to be redeveloped. And for a long time, the ownership was split between lots of different relatives, but I believe that that's been consolidated now. So my only pushback was to say that that had to be a public-private partnership. I'm just like, no, that's a great opportunity. Don't steer us in any one direction. And it might be kind of picky, but the DSP has been advocating that we create a publicly-funded parking garage at that location. And I have a little bit of PTSD from the River Park Square parking garage, so I'm loath to just put that in the plan until we have an actual proposal. So I don't know if anyone has comments about whether that's, I mean, I'm pushing back against it being so specific, but it is a specific objection. Councilmember Kinnear.
Yeah, I agree. And I have PTSD as well. I try not to let that color my opinion of that, but I don't think we should be specific. I think if somebody wants to develop that on their own, they should be given that opportunity without interference by the city.
Yeah. Any other thoughts? Okay, then the last one, this is part where I think I might have, I threw in two-way Main Street, but I'm thinking I was looking at an earlier vision. But there has been a visioning process for Main Street east of Washington, essentially. And I don't know if you've all seen it, but it's very attractive with bike lanes, really encourages people to be walking there and going to little shops all the way to the University District, somewhat impacted by the central city line going one direction on that street. But for some reason, there wasn't any discussion in the downtown plan. And some people, I think it was actually Senator Billick brought it up to Councilmember Kinnear and myself to say, hey, where's this? That's a great plan. We talked to staff and they said, well, we're kind of working on it. Some of it's in the six-year plan. And we were trying to figure out a way to just make it clear that when we're enacting this downtown plan update, we weren't saying no to that visioning plan. And we're trying to say yes, but without going into a lot of detail. So we were thinking about incorporating it as an appendix or in an appendix to say, yeah, we're generally pursuing this plan as part of the downtown plan. So that's the intent of it. I don't know if anyone has any comments about that.
Just a question. Do you know, does that, I haven't seen any latest versions of it. Do you know if it still encompasses the center parking or does that go away with the two-way?
Well, so first, I'm not sure the two-way is still there.
Oh.
And that's the first thing that I'm a little unclear.
I think two-way is a great idea.
Yeah. And then secondly, I think in the, again, the central city line route modifies it some. I think the central city line route currently incorporates the middle of the street parking. I believe so. But I don't know, maybe one of my STA board members. So the idea is we would incorporate this vision plan, but it might be a little modified because of the central city line. But there's just been a lot of work and the people in those, on those blocks really liked it. So that's the thing. Including Senator Billick, who has his office on that exact block that you're talking about. So, okay. Well, that's the end of that list. Was there anything else about downtown plan that anyone wanted to elevate once we figure out the procedure for elevating? Well, this has been great. I think this is the kind of conversation we really like for study sessions, where we go over specifics and have time and everyone gets a chance to talk about things. So thank you for being part of that. And apparently the mayor is having a press conference on the city's homeless plan right now, scheduled during this time. So I don't know what the plan is. And I look forward to figuring out why we weren't invited to it. So I'll be looking for that. Yes, Councilmember Mum.
Council President.
Yep.
I just, in case it's coming, but I really would like to see that homeless point in time counts that I think happened a couple of months ago. We usually get that really quickly. Do we know where that is?
Oh, well, no. So my understanding is the mayor had a presentation of that data in April and we, for some reason, have not been given that data. I have lost track of how many times I've requested it in writing and in person and have just been told it's not ready for you yet. It's coming, maybe Monday? Supposed to be, yeah, there's not a really good, there's no really good explanation that I've heard and I'm not happy about that. But Councilmember Kinnear.
Yeah, I've asked twice. I was told that you, Council President, were going to get it on Tuesday. I believe this is Thursday and you still don't have it. I asked for it before Monday because we're going to discuss it at Public Safety and we would like to look it over before the meeting. And I was told that, yes, we would have it before Monday, but we still don't have it. So anyone's guess, I don't know.
Yeah. So anyway, we'll probably ask some staff people on Monday about that. Anything else? All right. Well, if you haven't looked at your agenda for Monday, it is packed. And so we have a lot, a lot to do. And I'm looking forward to that. Councilmember Stratton.
I just wanted to say this was a good discussion. It was good conversation and I enjoyed it. But most importantly, the chat really enjoyed it. She's been sitting here listening to all of it and she hasn't moved except once. So that means we were, we were good and we kept her busy and thinking.
Yep. Great. Councilmember Wilkerson.
So does that mean we were, does that mean we were riveting in our conversation or what?
Yep.
I think it was riveting.
Yep.
For a Thursday. It's the best you could, I think it was perfect.
I agree.
Yep. All right. Oh, my gosh. She's got the hand clapping emoji, she's got humor, she does it all. All right. Well, we will be adjourned, everybody. Please take care of yourself and if you can, take care of someone else. Have a fabulous weekend. We're adjourned.